Could we all please rise and begin the meeting with our prayer? Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Green, I'll please salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Mr. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Counsel Samaras.
Here.
Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Martin.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
That's nine present.
Before we begin our regularly scheduled agenda, the chair would like to recognize Counsel Mercia and Counsel Martin for a moment of silence. Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and darken chamber for another friend of the city of Lowell, Albert G. Hebert, husband of the late Rita Hebert. Al was a United States Navy veteran, having served our country during World War II. Prior to his retirement, he was a director of maintenance and engineering for the former St. Joseph's Hospital for 23 years. Al was a longtime member of the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust, as well as a very active member of the Patacaville Citizens Council. This is how we all got to know Al, and on any given Tuesday, city council meeting, he would make his point of view known. He was instrumental in coining the term "Patacaville," God's country, going so far as to instructing me to have it put on the memorial stone at the foot of Acropolis Road with the American flag. Al had a great sense of pride for his beloved Patacaville. He accomplished many things that benefited his community. He was always ready to help at a moment's notice, along with his good friend Ray Willett. They were known as a dynamic duo. Al is survived by his two daughters, Lucille and Susan, and his son Albert Hebert. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. He truly will be missed. We also offer a moment of silence and darken chamber to all who have passed away since our last city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mercia. Counsel Martin?
Thank you. I would also like to add to our recognition Gerald Gilde, who died last week. Jerry was Lowell native and lived most of his life in Lowell, spent his retirement years in Tingsborough. He survived by his wife Fran, also a Lowell native, and his children, Michael, Mark, David, Brian, and Mary Joy. Jerry spent most of his career working for New England Telephone Company, but he was also a veteran of the United States Navy. Both his brother-in-law, Walter Sapinski, a Lowell native, and his son Michael became admirals in the U.S. Navy. Walter retired and Michael still active. Jerry was very involved in the community here. He also served as the executive director of the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. He was one of the founding members of the Centerville Neighborhood Partnership, as it was known then, and is one of only, I think, five or six lifetime members at the East End Club. So he was truly committed to Lowell. He very much followed and enjoyed what we did here in City Hall, especially on Tuesdays, and he will be truly missed. He was a solid contributor to this community.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for my uncle, John J. Leahy, Jr. John Leahy, 85, of Nashua, New Hampshire, formerly of Lowell, died November 22nd at St. Joseph's Hospital in Nashua. He was the beloved husband of Martha Smith Leahy, who survives him, who they would have celebrated their 50th. They did celebrate their 50th wedding anniversary this August. John was born on the Homestead Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass., on February 2nd, 1930. He was the fourth of six children and the first boy. He graduated Keith Galloway, 1947, later graduated from Marinol College and a master's degree from Boston College. He was drafted into the Navy and was assigned to Squadron VF-14 aboard the aircraft carrier USS Forstall and honorably discharged in 1957. He spent the next 40 years in the field of education as a teacher, a guidance counselor, school psychologist, director of pupil personnel in Manchester, New Hampshire, and a school psychologist in Lowell, Mass. John is survived by his wife Martha, his sons Sean and Patrick, three grandchildren, Ethan James, Aiko Rose, and John Arroco. He leaves his four sisters, Elizabeth Nangle, Eleanor O'Connor, Marilyn Gill, her husband Peter, Joan Lenzey, her husband Albert. John is survived by his only brother, attorney Dan Leahy, and his wife Gloria. John leaves his brother-in-law Joe Smith and his wife Donna, a sister-in-law Mary Hall, Howe, many nieces and nephews and their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Leahy. Anything further? Could we all please rise for a moment of silence, and can we please darken the chambers? May they all rest in peace. Before we begin the regularly scheduled agenda, the city clerk, I would just like to take a moment to recognize six of our Lowell firefighters who were honored yesterday at this, by the state. They were state firefighter of the year awards ceremony. Governor Baker presented these Lowell firefighters with the Medal of Valor for their work saving lives during the July 10th, 2014 fire on Branch Street in Lowell. This tragic blaze claimed eight lives, but they've saved many more. On behalf of the city of Lowell, we'd like to congratulate firefighter David McNeil, firefighter Michael McGuire, firefighter Mark Poria, Lieutenant Ryan Carroll, Lieutenant Mary Stomokas, and Captain Brett Darling. Chief Winward is here. If there's no objection, I'd just like you to come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief.
I'd also like to congratulate these six firefighters for their heroic efforts on the night of July 10th, 2014. This was a terribly tragic fire, as we all know, and none of the firefighters felt good about the saves that they made. But that fire could have been a lot worse if not for their heroic quick thinking, their great efforts, the great team effort of all the police officers, EMTs, and the firefighters. The six firefighters that got the award yesterday were right down the street at the Branch Street Firehouse, and they responded within seconds. And it's very difficult to respond to a fire like that without any time to form a plan. They were only seconds away, and when they got there, they immediately threw ladders to the building and saved as many people as they could. And for that, I congratulate them. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We appreciate that. With that, I'd like to proceed to the regularly scheduled agenda. First item, on the city clerk, we have minutes of the city council meeting of November 17th. We also have minutes from the Transportation Subcommittee, also held on the 17th, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Item number two is a public hearing, but that was advertised for 7:00 PM, so we will proceed down the agenda until 7:00 o'clock. Next item under section three, we have communications from the city manager. We have motion responses. We'll begin, we have motion responses A through F. We will begin with motion response A from the city manager, that is assessment of personal safety equipment for the Lowell Police Department and the Lowell Fire Department. Comments, questions? Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. To the city manager, I want to thank you and Chief Superintendent Taylor and Chief Winward for this report. This is a complete report, and it is basically what I was looking for. A question or concern that I have, you know, in the report, they do cite, for example, some of the critical items, which include a self-contained breathing apparatus, jaws of life, handcuffs, bulletproof vests. These are, well, let's put it this way. These are the men who we put in harm's way to make sure that our city's safe, that we're safe. And I just want to, like everybody else here does, make sure that they have the right type of equipment. And so the question I would like to ask you, Mr. Manager, is there any way of developing, we'll say, a plan for these departments, a financial plan, and we can look at these in a unique way? We'll say the painters need paintbrushes, but the thing is, if they don't have, we'll say, the best of equipment, it is what it is. But these are the people that need the best of equipment, the type of equipment that meets today's technology, that are literally lifesaving. So where I'm going with this is, what type of a plan can we develop that can, we'll say, expedite this type of purchase?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Counsel Samaras. We, as part of our budget every year, not only the operational budget, but the capital budget, is that we ask the different department heads to give us their needs in their various departments. We showed a report about this previously, the capital, our priorities for capital, and you see is that in the Fire Department, we have responded to some of their requests in the back. We passed in the past capital budget, this city council funded a new pumper, funded new turnout gear and vehicles for the deputy superintendent. So we take it very seriously, not only--
There's no question.
Yeah, and this council takes it very seriously, but we always update what the needs are, and we make it part of the operational and the capital budget, and we fund them within the means that we have.
Okay. But you understand my point. I mean, I know how seriously you do take this, but it's still an issue that I think we have to be constantly aware of and continue to want this as close as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. For the comments on motion response A, seeing none, we'll move on to motion response B, which is mural project. Any comments, thoughts, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to motion response C, coordinating an art festival in downtown Lowell. Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report was generated by a motion from, that was submitted by you, and in the last sentence, it says that the matter might warrant a referral to the Arts and Culture Subcommittee for lengthy discussion, so I would like to move that we send this matter to that Subcommittee.
Motion by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Belanger, to send that, this motion response to the Arts and Cultural Subcommittee. Further discussion on that? We have our cool director here, Susan. Anything, Susan? Want to add to that while you're here? Thank you for coming.
I'm happy to be here. I think that's a great idea. I'd love to be able to talk about a lot of the concerns and excitement that came up out of the community discussions around this event.
Excellent. Very good. I think it's exciting. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion carries, it goes to the Arts and Cultural Subcommittee. Moving on to motion response D, police coverage in the neighborhoods. Counsel La Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did get a report back, and at the time that Counselor Kennedy and Counselor Samaras jointly filed this motion, there were people that watched the council and called to me and asked me, "When you get a response, could you please give us a call and let us know what the response was about?" And I did that, and I know that the chief is here this evening, and I'm happy that he is, but I don't think it was an adequate report. It just, but he's here, so maybe he could fill us in a little bit better. For one thing, it says we have two sectors. I often thought we had three, but now it's two, and we have different districts added. It's not like it used to be before. I guess it was retooled or whatever. But it says each neighborhood has a designated patrol officer on each shift, but that's not telling me what type of patrol it is, a police going around in a cruiser in different neighborhoods. And this can apply to any neighborhood, but I'm specifically targeting the Gage Field area, where over by the Robinson School, a man from Lawrence was walking around with a gun up there, and I don't know, there must be a police report on it. We didn't see that, and I probably don't have any right to look at it. But then there was another incident where a kid was slashed in the head with a knife, and so it made people around that immediate area very concerned as to what type of coverage are we having. So when you say we have designated patrol officers, I don't see the police walking the beat. Is it because it's too cold now, or what's going on? I don't know. Are they on bicycles, or is that too cold? Are they in patrol cars? I'm just concerned as to, I don't see police presence in, and I'm sure back central neighborhood would be concerned as well. I'm focusing on these two neighborhoods. So if you could just let us know what the action is that's being taken. I thought maybe we'd see more police walking the beat. I don't see it anymore, and I think that it's like the graffiti issue. When we had graffiti and we didn't take care of it, it got out of control to the point where we were inundated with graffiti, but when we kept on top of it, you don't see it anymore. Let's knock on wood for saying that. We might see it tomorrow, but that's the same issue with the police. We seen police walking in twos, going to the different neighborhoods, and I love that. We don't seem to see it. I don't know, maybe people are seeing it, but people are telling me they don't see it. So if you could just elaborate, chief, and before I go any further, let me compliment you for being a gentleman and having the people that are concerned about carrying a firearm that are good, responsible people, and you did meet with them last evening, and you didn't even have to do that, you did. So I know you're very cooperative. I hate to, you know, say things like this, but I'm only bringing a message. I'm the messenger from people that don't see police bicycles in the neighborhoods. If you could expound on that a little bit, I'm sorry.
Chief Taylor, districts, presence in the neighborhood, walking the beat?
So thank you very much, Mayor, and through you to the Counselor Mercia. The report asked us to specifically give some indication of how we deploy our officers in the neighborhood, and so we tried to do that. Obviously, there's some operational security concerns that we don't want to specifically get into great detail about our deployment strategy. But recently, last year, we went through a reorganization, and we changed, as part of the presentation we made to the council, we changed it from three sectors to two, but we also, in each sector, there's two districts. So I think the way to think about our deployment strategy in the neighborhood is that it's overlapping areas of geographic jurisdiction. So we have the sector cruises that are assigned to every neighborhood in the city, and there's a number of them, depending on the shifts. In addition to that, we have offices assigned to walking, segue, and some bicycle routes across the city. Overlay on top of that, we have our community policing strategy, which is our district response officers. There's a total of 24 of them assigned across the city, and each one of those officers are assigned to a different district, and then obviously, there's two districts to each sector, and then the sectors are commanded by a captain, and they each have a geographic substation in the city where they work out of. And I think the important thing to understand with those district, those district response officers, they are combined with supervisors, officers on bicycles usually, or walking in the neighborhood, and they're combined with a dedicated crime analyst, teach sector of the city. So they're formed into problem-solving teams, and they're designed to work with the neighborhood groups and individuals in these localized neighborhoods to identify problem areas, try and come up to develop some strategic plan to address those problems, and then try and prevent those little geographic hotspots from becoming the next crime generator in the area. On top of those two layers of geographic areas of responsibility, we also have included this year our, the introduction of our gang unit, which we rededicated to a patrol function this particular year. I think it's worked out fabulously. And what I will say, on, there was one particular weekend that we had some incidents in the back central street neighborhood, and that would be the October 30th going into October 31st. I will tell you that I am absolutely very proud of the actions of the police officers on duty that particular evening and that entire weekend. They were right there when the incident happened. One incident happened on Mead Street. They, because they were geographically assigned to that neighborhood, they made a very quick arrest of an individual, two individuals with a firearm that were involved in shooting a couple of rounds into the air, and those individuals came from another geographic area of the city. So they made two arrests. In addition to that, on that same evening, in the same neighborhood on Kinsman Street, they made another arrest of two individuals that were involved in distributing drugs into the community, and they recovered a second firearm. A subsequent follow-up investigation the next day recovered a third firearm related to that original incident on Mead Street. So the reaction and the response of the officers was, I believe, absolutely outstanding, and I'm very proud of their efforts on that regard. They arrested four individuals that weekend in back central street, that particular evening, and recovered a total of three firearms off the street. Luckily, nobody was hurt in any of those incidents, so, and that was a result of our geographic areas of responsibility with the overlapping gang unit. The other thing that I will also say is that our community policing efforts and some of our problem-solving teams, I think so far, quite candidly, the results have been spectacular. Very, very good, hard work by the officers that are out there day and night. We had, if you take the whole spectrum of crime in the city, we had a 12% reduction last year in crime. So far, to date this year, we've got an additional 13% reduction above the 12% from last year. So, you know, I put it simply, it's good news on top of good news. And then certainly, I think by any evaluation, shootings are significantly reduced in the city this year compared to last year. So my point is, I think so far, and I always say that with a note of caution, but so far, I think our combined community policing and gang strategy with these problem-solving teams in the neighborhoods have certainly been extremely productive, and I think we're going in the right direction. We also continue to work with other city services in the community. Just today, for example, we had a drug raid on Shaw Street, and as a result of the drug raid, we worked collaboratively with inspectional services from the city and the Managers Problem Property Task Force, and that building was shut down because of the illegal activity and the conditions of the building that the officers and the inspectional services found. So that's another indication of how we're working together collaboratively to try and make the city the best and the safest city in the city. You know, I was at a CNAG meeting in Centerville last Monday evening, and there was a gentleman there that complimented us for some of our bicycle officers. They happened to be in the West Centerville area, but he was very complimentary to a particular officer that he sees on a regular basis over there. So, I mean, I think we're doing a very good job in our efforts across the city. I certainly understand that sometimes on an individual basis, people would like to see more officers in the neighborhood, and we're always striving to do that, and we'll continue to, you know, make sure that we push those, more officers out. Clearly, after I took over, I understood that the city council wanted to see more officers on bikes, walking, and then we introduced the segways in the downtown area. So we'll continue to make sure that we push that agenda forward. I think that's the key component of any good community policing, its public safety strategy, is to have officers in the neighborhoods visible, talking to the residents that live and work there, and developing those relationships before they become critical, and we need them in a time of an emergency. So, thank you.
So chief, what we have here, is that ShotSpotter system, is that going to be on the up and running sometime?
Well, I think the ShotSpotter system, we've talked to two different vendors, and we're trying to get the appropriate system available for the city that combines that technology with a video surveillance system that's integrated together. So far, we haven't really found the appropriate vendor, and we've been reluctant to, you know, dedicate ourselves to that function at this point until we get the appropriate, you know, find the right direction. I know we're working with the manager on that.
Mr. Manager, and then Counsel Samaras?
Yes, and this council appropriated the $500,000 to do the ShotSpotter program, and it is available for us when we get the right technology. As a matter of fact, someone else has reached out to us to do a demonstration, so we're hoping that when the technology gets to that point where you combine both the ShotSpotter and the cameras, we have the money in the bank to pay for that system.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel Samaras?
I wasn't--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, chief. I just want to say that I know that you're doing a great job, and I'm not blaming the police for not being there. I'm only delivering a message from people. If you had put this in a report, I could have told the people all the things that you said, so maybe it was a good thing that I brought it up. Just briefly, there is an area I want you to be aware of, and that is the reservoir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mayor Elliott.
And Counsel Leahy?
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Taylor. I was present at the Centerville meeting, neighborhood meeting, and Superintendent Taylor did do a good job explaining about what was going on at the reservoir, and I think Counsel Mercia is correct in a sense of, a number of people have been concerned about issues like that, and Superintendent Taylor did, I think, a great job in allaying the fears of people. I think when we made the motion, Counsel Kennedy and myself made the motion, like on, some of it stemmed from back central street, and the only issue is, you're doing the work, but sometimes people see a spike in crime or something in their neighborhood, and it's, how do we get that information to them as to what you're doing? I mean, you can't give the details. I understand that, but I think what we're all saying at this particular point, when some things like this happen, and you know there's a spike in a certain area, I mean, maybe we can come up with some type of creative way to get that information to the neighborhood groups so they better understand that action is taking place, so they don't make wrong assumptions.
I completely agree, Counselor, and shortly after the incident in the back central area, I had the captain that's assigned to that sector reach out for the residents in that area, and they held a meeting that week to try and, you know, make sure that the communication was flowing back and forth, and I understand that was being done. But I completely understand, you know, that's very upsetting for the residents in that area, even though we did a good job, and we, I think we took care of the issues very expeditiously, but that's still of a concern to the neighborhood. I completely understand that.
No, thank you for that, because I also attended the Sullivan School, the Velvadi Group, and you had a captain there. So, I mean, when those meetings happen, your explanations are sound, they're good, and they allay the fears of people, but there comes a time in between those meetings when something does happen, if we can get, you know, more information in other ways out to the community. It just helps. Thank you.
Yes, we will do. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Chief, I just, same concerns. I was actually up in Centerville today in the reservoir area. Couple of people had asked me about that. So is there anything different going on? I wasn't able to make the meeting, but--
No, I'm not particularly familiar right now with the issues most recently in the reservoir. I certainly will look into it. I know that that, on occasion, can be an area that requires some extra attention. I'll make sure we look into it.
Okay. I guess the neighbors were talking about, and it wasn't, you know, recent, but within the year, the break-ins and stuff, so they were concerned with that.
Well, we did have a very good arrest up there, and two notable incidents up there. Because of the teamwork between the police and the community, we had an arrest on that backside. I think it was in the Christian Street area, or maybe one street over, and a resident called in. We were able to very quickly identify a suspect and arrest him in that particular situation. You might remember about a year or so ago, we had a break-in on Christian Street that, you know, was very problematic. Some, a woman up there lost some personal jewelry that belonged to her family, and we responded, and we couldn't develop any suspects right away. However, there was some DNA evidence that was retrieved from the scene, I think some blood, and we put that into the DNA database. Unfortunately, in this case, it took like 14 months, but we did get a hit-- Unfortunately, it, in this case, it took like 14 months, but we did get a hit back on that, and we've charged somebody with that. Unfortunately, it just takes a tremendously long time to get those cases, you know, put through the, the analysis system at the state police laboratory. But I'm certainly hopeful that in the future, those type of analysis will be able to done, be done quicker so that we can turn around much quicker and get some resolution for people. But we did charge somebody in that one, too.
Yeah. No, they would, they just brought up a few concerns, and just to let people know that, the room that we're working on, she told me it's a little dirty in the corner because it was fingerprinted, and I have to paint over the dust. So, I know you're doing a good job, and they fingerprinted the place completely, so it's a good job. Thank you.
Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, if we could go back to back Central for a minute, just because it was, when we filed the motion, that we filed the motion was because of, was a complaint that came from back Central Street. And in part of that complaint was that the person had called the police department asking what there was for coverage, and was told that the, there was not enough crime in the area to warrant any coverage. So, when you look at the map that you provided, the back Central Street area is, is small geographically. And so I could understand where, where maybe you wouldn't want to just have a cruiser right there all of the time, just covering that small little area. But is the, is the coverage there adequate? And also, when you, you pointed to three, two or three events that, that the police department took quick and, and successful action. But I thought you said that those people came from other parts of the city. Did you mean that the, the police officers came from another part of the city to cover back Central, or could you just, be a little clearer on that?
Sure.
What kind of coverage there is there? Because, because that's kind of one of the things that initiated the motion.
Right. And I, I attended the back Central Street meeting, I think it was last Thursday, and I, I did talk to the residents, yeah. And so, first of all, the, the people that I were talking, was explaining about, they came, the perpetrators of the crime came from a different, different area of the city. There was some kind of a house potty on Mead Street that evening, and that drew kids in that age group, 18 to 20 age group, to that potty, and that's why. That was really what happened to that, that assault there. The back Central Street area is certainly a very, it's a small geographic area, extremely densely compacted people, the residents that live in that area. The way I think is best to explain is we have those overlapping areas of geographic responsibility. So you do have a, there's always a cruiser that's assigned to that area. It may be a little bit of a, it may go a little bit more up towards Gorm Street, but there's always an officer assigned to that geographic area, right? And then on top of that, we have those district response officers that come in with the supervisors and the crime analysts, and they work on hotspots. And many often, many times, as we explained at this meeting last week, the captain in charge of that area, when he sees a spike in crime, he makes sure that the officers are in that area on bicycle patrol, and he, he, he highlighted to the residents at that meeting, you know, some of the times and dates that we had the officers over there conducting proactive patrol. So, so you have the patrol units that are assigned across the city. You have these district response officers that are assigned on bicycles that come in, and, you know, they're in and out of those neighborhoods all the time. And then on top of that, you have, for example, the other patrol assets, the gang unit that comes in as they did that evening, and made very, very, made greater arrests along with the patrol force.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Chief. Further discussion on motion response D, police coverage in the neighborhoods. Seeing none, we'll move on to motion response E, purchase of a line striper. Any comments on that item? Council Leahy? All set?
Um, yes.
Okay. That can, so there's one informational response from the city manager, and that's the MSBA letter that we will see. Council Blanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, all in all, good news. The city of Lowell has been invited into phase two of the project. That's, which involves the approval of conducting a feasibility study on the project, which is great, great news. It also states very clearly that this is, you know, not an official approval of the project. I think we all need to be cognizant of that, that the process is still a long way to go. But, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, one thing I'd like you to clarify, Mr. Manager, is that where the city of Lowell is more or less cautioned, if you will, that if communities, it states specifically that communities that quote "get ahead" of the MSBA will not be eligible for grant funding. What, what's, can you be a little specific about that? What do they mean by getting ahead?
Mr. Manager?
Well, they don't want us to hire our own feasibility study designer without their input. So we can't just go out and pick somebody that we think is, what we like. We have to use their process, and we have to get their approval in picking a designer. So they won't pay for that design, designer to do any work because we're out ahead of their process. So that's what they're talking about. They just want us to work with them
Okay.
to make sure that the people that are hired, like the, the project manager, the construction management team, the feasibility designer, are all, they feel are well-qualified to be doing the job that we're asking them to do.
Okay, that's, but on one side, we're ahead of schedule, if you will, by a couple of months, which is great news. Congratulations to you, Mr. Manager and the administration, for your hard work. But we just want to get ahead of the MSBA. Okay, I see where you're coming from. But it does further on state that we can go forward with a project manner and, manager and designer. Is that what this is for? Is that going to go out to bid, or how does that process work?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, what we're going to do is, we're having a conference call with the MSBA next week to discuss the next steps, and specifically how to achieve them. But generally, what you were talking about is we're going to be advertising for an office project manager. This is the architect that's going to be working throughout the entire process to make sure that the project goes along as it should be going. They'll be working with the construction team and, and everybody else. So once we hire the OPM, what we will then do is go out for a feasibility design study person, and that will be a person that will work with the OPM to do a feasibility study of where the, how, where the high school should be. Should it be in its current location, and what configuration, or should it be in another site in the city? So that's, those are the two steps that we'll be taking in the, probably, I would say, probably, we'll start the process in December to pick a OPM. And, you know, we're really three months ahead of the, ahead of the schedule right now, which is pretty good. A lot of, a lot, if you read in the newspapers, a lot of school departments are behind the process.
Yeah.
But we're actually ahead of the process. So, it's very, very enlightening. It's very positive about getting the funding for the high school.
It is, it is. It's wonderful news, Mr. Manager. So how long do you think the whole, the whole feasibility process is going to take, if you will, to, all the way to completion?
I would say about a year to finalize the feasibility. You're, you're talking, looking about a year from now for us to have a good idea, have an idea of where the, the new high school is going to be and what the configuration will be.
All right. Excellent, Mr. Manager. Outstanding work, and I look forward to future updates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Further comments, questions on motion, informational response F. Seeing none, entertain a motion to accept these reports as reports of progress and placed on file by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Martin. All those in favor of those, of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. Those are accepted and placed on file. We will now go back to section two for the general public hearing that was advertised for 7:00 PM, it's after 7:00 PM. This petition has been withdrawn by the, by the petitioner. So, so there will be no public hearing. We will not open the public hearing. We don't need a motion to withdraw it. Nope. Okay, they just withdrew it. So moving on to, we're back to 3.2, there was a communication from the city manager, and that's regarding setting the minimum residential factor. This requires a public hearing. Motion to send this to a public hearing on December 8th at 7:00 PM by Council of Mercy, seconded by Council Melonazo. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries, that will, that minimum residential hearing will be set on December 8th. Proceed to section four, that's votes from the city manager. We have a vote to apply, expend, accept grant of $1,003,103 from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Continuum of Care Homeless Assistance. This requires two readings before a roll call. Motion away with the full reading by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Samaris. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries second reading by title. And city council has a vote approving the application to apply, accept, and expend funds in the amount of $1,003,103 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for homeless assistance services. Council Melonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I'm sorry, the police chief has, has left, but I will certainly support this vote for this amount of grant funding and to support, again, the six renewal programs, Alternative House, House of Hope, Lowell Transitional Living Center, and so forth. But today, I happened to be on Middlesex Street behind an LRTA bus, a little after 1:00, and I looked over, and there were two people allegedly homeless, one I know is homeless, but allegedly homeless, sitting on the sidewalk, passing a joint back and forth. Broad daylight, 1:00 in the afternoon. So, again, I understand all of these service providers are doing good work and trying to, again, help homeless people that do need services, but to see this at 1:00 in the afternoon, broad daylight, across from Washington Savings Bank, it was right in front of Martin Jewelers, right in front of the former Martin Jewelers building. And they're just sitting there as bold as can be. Again, I just want, I bring it up because obviously it's related, because this is a grant for homeless assistance services, and I certainly will support that, but I just want to bring it to the administration's attention. Obviously a problem up in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Manager?
I'll certainly contact the superintendent tomorrow, make sure that they monitor that, and make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Council Martin?
Yeah. Is this what would used to be known as the McKinney money that comes through the CDPG program?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, if I could just follow up on Council Melonazo's comments. I mean, you know, the city's got some, I guess, bad publicity recently, the court case, and the panhandling ordinance, and the city council cracking down on homelessness. But really, in my view at least, that's not what the city councils do. And the city council's trying to crack down on panhandling. And whether people are homeless or not, that's what we're trying to restrict, is the panhandling. Some of those people who are panhandling probably are homeless, but others probably are not. And, and so that's sort of the, the social ill, I think, that the city council's trying to get at, and that the public really wants to see addressed in spite of what the federal courts seem to do. But, you know, what this city does for homeless people often goes unremarked upon. And, you know, granted this is a federal program, but this comes through the city. The city administers it for the entire region. It's a million dollars this year. It's similar amounts for as long as I've been here. These are very worthy programs. People do what they can to assist the homeless people. Sometimes that results in attracting more homeless people to the city. So, I guess I take it personally when I read comments by federal judges or attorneys who purport to represent homeless people and homeless clients who they don't know or can't find, in many cases, when the court date comes. I think those, those Boston law firms should spend their time and their pro bono hours on more worthwhile projects. But, because this city is committed to trying to help homeless people. We've spent a million dollars this year. Every year I've been here, it's at least that amount of money. And we're doing what we can. I, I submit that surrounding communities don't do as much as we do, and they should do more. And if they did, perhaps we wouldn't have the issues we have with panhandling and the like. So, I know Councilor Melonazo's frustrated at what he saw today. We all are downtown and see things we don't like. We're trying to do what we can, but I didn't want it to go uncommented upon that. The city remains committed to helping assist homeless people, and we've been doing that for many, many years, something that really doesn't seem to attract very much attention.
Thank you, Council. Council Blanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues. They're bringing up some good points on, on a subject really, which is, you know, the homelessness and panhandling, it's getting worse. In the city, it really is. And it's really a difficult problem. We're not getting much help in the court system by the judges. We got a, what I would call an unfavorable decision on the panhandling issue. And you can see them that they've ramped up their efforts here on the street. They know, they know, they're smart enough to know their rights, and you can't stop them, and they know that. But, Mr. Manager, there's, you had mentioned something that could potentially be a preventative measure that was putting in drop boxes throughout the downtown, that instead of giving money to panhandlers, pedestrians and whatnot, could put money in drop boxes that would go to the, all the nonprofits locally, homeless and whatnot, that could help these people rather than panhandle. That way, we could discourage publicly panhandling. That we have drop boxes, please put money in drop boxes. That will go directly to these nonprofits who help these individuals. I think that's a much better strategy. The circumvent, the unfavorable decisions, we continue to get time and time again. I'm just wondering the progress there and how we've, how you've made out.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, that's a great, great point. And as far as Council Martin, I wish Justice Woodlock would spend a little more time in downtown Lowell. Maybe his decision wouldn't have read the same as it did. But what we were talking about, one of the items we have is San Antonio has a good program, and it's sort of like, don't feed the pigeons. They actually, what they do is in their parking kiosks, they actually have signs to say, put another dollar in this parking kiosk, and it will go to helping out the unfortunate or the homeless people. And that way, you won't feel obliged to give a dollar to a panhandler out on the street. So you've, you feel that you've, you've, you've done your duty towards the, the homeless and the hapless. But those are programs that we're looking at, putting signs up, you know, like, don't, don't feed the pigeons, but it's don't give the panhandlers money. So it's, it's a public education system that we're talking, we're using. But we're combining that. If you listen, if you read the decision that Justice Woodlock wrote about the city of Lowell ordinances, is, it was based upon free speech. But they also, he also said that we, in the decision, he says that the city has other means to prevent panhandlers from doing what they're doing. And I take that to read that we should be enforcing our ordinances strictly towards panhandlers. Loitering, littering, jaywalking, all these other, you know, abuse of, of people. So what I've done is I've sat down with the police department. We're coming up with a plan, because we're going to be making a presentation to the subcommittee on panhandling and jaywalking, where we take those procedures like that and try and, and work on the panhandlers by enforcing those type of ordinances.
That's wonderful news, Mr. Manager. I think that's a, a great strategy. So I look forward to your presentation on the subcommittee, and hopefully we can, after the first of the year, come up with somewhat of a resolution to the situation, which is, again, increasing, and it needs attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Council Mercy?
Well, I heard a good idea from the radio one day when someone said, "It would be nice if the city of Lowell, through the Career Center, got a second-hand kind of a van and stocked it with lunches, and picked up these people because they are hungry, they don't have a job, offer them a job of cleaning up different areas. And if they don't want to do it, then they're, they're advertising false representation, and for that, they should be fined or asked to move." If they don't want to live up to their part of what the sign says, then they're falsifying a piece of paper. That's what I would have said.
Thank you, Council. Further, further discussion on this, this grant application or acceptance of money for a million dollars? Seeing, seeing none, motion to approve by Council Martin, seconded by Council Leahy. Roll call.
Council Samaris?
Yes?
Council Blanger?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Melonazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Next section is subcommittee. Any subcommittee reports? Council, Mr. Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a subcommittee report, but I do want to take a point of personal privilege at this time. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to discuss an issue that was brought up to... I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to discuss an issue that was brought up to me on Friday concerning the veterans, the VFW post 662, and the Voice of Democracy contest.
Okay, motion requested by Council Mercia, second by Council Milonazo for point of information, personal privilege. All those in favor of that motion signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed motion carries. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 11th month of the 11th hour, at 11:00, we honor all veterans, past and present, on Veterans Day, but before we do, the veterans at the VFW hold the Voice of Democracy contest as they have for the past 40 years. They set a theme, and they have judges, of which I was one of many, for the past eight years. This year, when I called to inquire as to the reminder that I didn't receive, I was told that no school participated, and they would not be holding that event. What a sad state of affair when there is no interest from any school to take part in writing an essay on my vision for America, which was this year's topic. A group of veterans went to eight high schools in the immediate area, Lowell High School, the Greater Lowell Vogue, Lowell Catholic, Drakehead High, Chemsford High, Notre Dame, Tinsborough High, and many others. They gave each person that entered three discs to say their speech in case they made a mistake on any one of them. Any one of the grades from 9 to 12 can enter, and each school narrows the field down. Ample time was given so that they could compile their thoughts in a more than adequate timeframe. First prize is $300, second prize is $200, and $100 to the others. The first place winner can move up to the states and obtain more scholarship money, and possibly advance to the nationals for a chance to gain $30,000. After the event, the veterans offer a wonderful buffet for all the families that attend. The veterans go out of their way to show everyone a nice time, but this year, I'm wondering out loud, what happened? Who dropped the ball? Was it the teachers? Was it the laziness or a busy social life with the students? Did people in the school system fail to send their message forward? What caused the lack of interest? What does this say about society when it comes to our veterans? Does anybody even care anymore? Has the Voice of Democracy contest gone the way of the Veterans Day parade, or taken the Christ out of Christmas? I say this because the veterans asked me to bring this message forward, and ask you, my elected official colleagues, should the veterans stop this once-popular event, or should they not give up and try again next year? Or do we say, as the great President Harry Truman, the buck stops here? Let's start at Lowell High School, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you to find out from Superintendent Khalifaoui what went wrong, and if you could come back with the answer about Lowell High School, and what will, that will determine the veterans' decision as to keep the contest or not. This part of history should not die. I remember when I was up at Notre Dame, I entered the Voice of Democracy contest, I was very proud to do that, I didn't receive anything, but I did get an honorable mention, and I was very proud of that, and I still remember that to this day. I don't know what happened, I'm disappointed by the lack of interest. We talk about our heroes being our veterans, we preach this in schools, and nobody takes part in any type, maybe students don't have a vision for America. I don't know what happened, I'm very disappointed, and so are the veterans, and they asked me to bring this message forward, and I am, and I'm very sad about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I will, I am disappointed to hear that as well, because I have to share with you that I actually filed a motion on the floor of the school committee, specifically for that scholarship opportunity. So, I will find out what happened, why it was not communicated, or if it was communicated, why we didn't get at least one entry from 3,600 students at the high school, but I did file that motion, specifically that application for Voice of Democracy, because, as you mentioned, it's a scholarship opportunity, and so I will follow up.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Council Belanger on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I agree with Council Mercia, I was at the same event, and we certainly got an airful that morning on Veterans Day, I mean, you heard the disappointment on Council Mercia's voice, well, these veterans were really, really upset over this, this means a lot to them, for these kids to engage and get involved, I don't think they're looking to do this to get recognized, they just, you know, would like some engagement, more or less, and they did not get it. And I'd like, you know, some answers, as well as Council Mercia, of where, I mean, it's not just Lowell schools, Drake and Chemsford were reached out to, and no response, but if, Mr. Mayor, you could carry the torch and see where the relapse in communication was here, and see what went wrong, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I will, Council, and you should also know, the school department did receive, accept, and we received 30 books that have been dispersed to every one of our schools, being, hopefully being read to the students about the importance of veterans, so, that came from the Veterans Assistance Veteran, Veterans Assisting Veterans Association, and that donation, so they, we did get 30 books, and they were in the schools as well before Veteran Day, so we're setting the stage to teach our children the importance of the veterans. But I'll follow up on that, next Wednesday I'll file a motion. That concludes point of information. Motion to request the mayor get a report back to this council by Council Belanger, second by Council Leahy, all those in favor of that motion signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. Any Subcommittee reports and/or meetings upcoming? Seeing none, that concludes that section, we now will go to petitions, we have three petitions, first miscellaneous petition is from Tara Manchester, requesting the installation of a handicap parking sign located at 53 to 59 Pine Street. Motion to refer this to the traffic engineer for report and recommendation by Council Samaras, second by Council Rourke.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to amend it to be a 60-day trial, and the reason I say that is because the cold weather is coming, and if we wait to the quarterly report, it'll probably be February or whatever, and there's not a way they're going to go into the ground, so, I'd like to make it a 60-day trial.
Motion by Council Mercia to make it a 60-day trial, second by Council Milonazo, all those in favor signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Motion to refer this to Traffic Engineer, as amended by Council Samaras, second by Council Rourke, all those in favor signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next motion, another miscellaneous petition by Patricia Donahue, Gallery Z Artists Co-op, requesting City Council approval for an overhanging sign located at 167 Market Street. In a motion to refer this to the Lot Department for report and recommendation as well by Council Rourke, second by Council Milonazo, all those in favor of that motion signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Last petition of the evening by Karen Maranto, request permission to discuss handicap parking sign on Crawford Street. Is Ms. Maranto here? Seeing none, Council Martin?
Yeah, I'd request that this be referred to the manager for report and recommendation, seems like there's been potential abuse of the process here, somebody has a handicap sign, yet can walk upstairs to a third-floor apartment, so, I think it's worthy of checking out.
Motion by Council Martin, second by Council Leahy to refer this to the manager for report and recommendation, all those in favor of that motion signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, motion passes. That concludes the petition section, now we move on to City Council motions. First motion of the evening by Council Mercia, request City Manager have proper person or persons visit each school, and make a list of items needing to be addressed per the request of each school's custodian. Second by Council Milonazo, Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, threw you to the City Manager. Mr. Manager, I know it's a, this is a lengthy, it's a tall order to be given to you, I understand that, but it seems that I have been to a couple of schools, and I've talked to a few custodians, I don't know why they told me, but they're a little bit frustrated because they put in orders to have different things looked at and done, and it's like, I don't know if, I don't know what the tie-up or holdup is, but it doesn't get done in a timely manner, there's sometimes when they need the help of outside means, like landed buildings or different other departments, and I think it's a good idea to go into, let's say, one particular school and say to the custodian, what is, which, what are your priorities here that you need done? There's a window broken, it's been taking some time to be fixed, go into another school and say, what, you know, maybe you could do five at a time, or whatever, I know there's a large number of schools, but this is an, I think this is a good motion, because if people were to go in and say, well, here's a particular school, they need these five things addressed, it's been forever, it seems, I don't know what the tie-up is, I kind of do, but I want you to find that out, you'll see for yourself what the tie-up is, and I just think you should know that.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Manager?
It's a very timely motion.
It's a tall order for me to give you.
No, no, it isn't, because each year, our Division of Inspeccional Services has to do an inspection of each school, and we just met the other day with Sean Shanahan, who's done a complete inspection of all the schools, and has a laundry list of repairs that need to be done to these schools.
Good.
So, I've already met with the Commissioner of DPW, I've asked him to come up with an action plan to address these issues, and we're going to be meeting next week to address the issues that are listed in that laundry list of repairs that need to be made.
That's fine, thank you so much.
Council Leahy and Council Kennedy?
Thank you, threw you to the manager. With this laundry list, I was looking at a few of the schools, too, are there long-range goals, too, because some of the newest schools, the metal on the outside and the doors, that's gonna, the longer that goes, the more expensive that's gonna be.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, there are short-term goals, like things I could fix.
Yeah.
To long-term things, like doors and windows and other long-term, but it's a comprehensive report by Mr. Shanahan on each school, and I'm taking it seriously, and we're going to need a game plan from the Commissioner of Public Works to make sure that he addresses it, because it's interesting, we negotiated flexibility in our contracts with 1705, so the Parks Department employees who work very hard during the summer, but maybe not as hard during the winter in the parks, we now can transfer them over to lands and buildings to help out with lands and buildings, so I'm looking for that game plan, to use that flexibility for these employees to help out with lands and buildings during the winter months, and do the interior repairs in the schools.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Manager, you've gone to the school department?
Pardon me?
You've gone to the school department as well, to have, to have a joint meeting with, because I do know there are two plumbers specifically dedicated to the...
Yes, correct, Mr. Mayor, excellent point, we had Brian Curly here with us, because we want to make sure that the school department buys into it, and helps out, when they can help out with, there's custodians that could do some of this work, I mean, when you look at the list, it's ceiling tiles, it's a doorknob.
Right.
These things can be addressed by even myself, and so, those are the smaller items, but there are large-ticket items, but we're getting a game plan for, to make sure that we deal with these in an immediate manner. It's our responsibility, it's our building, and we're tasked with doing that, and we have to do it.
Well, Mr. Manager, why don't we leave the ceiling tiles to DPW, we don't want you on any ladders. I'll say, Council Kenny? I'll say, Council Leahy? Okay, further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Next motion of the evening by Council Samaras, request City Manager have proper department assess the need and condition of streetlights in our city neighborhoods, starting with Lower Centerville, second by Council Rourke, Council Samaras?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, your administration's done a good job in the lighting of downtown, but in neighborhood meetings, lighting has become a concern, especially in the Lower Centerville area around Coben Street. So, what the citizens were looking for this past Monday was a report, how and when streetlighting would be improved in the Centerville area, also the, you know, and also, I'd like to have that report, you know, be citywide in the various neighborhoods, because that is a concern with different groups. But there was some interesting discussion also on parks, lighting, what parks are lighted, what parks aren't, but a concern came in with also better lighting, sometimes at nighttime attracts people to hang around with the lighting, you know, at night, so there was some conflict in the discussions, you know, what direction, if we have better lighting, will that truly make the area safer, or will it encourage people to, we'll say, hang around? So, I guess part of the study, they're looking at what makes for good street lighting, what makes for good, proper lighting in the parks, but at the same time, how do we ensure that it doesn't create a place to hang around with? So, you know, there's no easy answer to that, but it's just concerns that people have, and they're good, and they're real concerns. Thank you.
Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, that motion passes. Last motion of the evening by Council Leahy and Council Samaras, request City Manager have proper department work with Belvedere Neighborhood Group on beautification project for trash cans and electric, electrical light boxes. You saying you, you're saying, Council Leahy?
Okay, I'll go first, thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself, we'd just like the manager, if you could get someone in the proper departments to work with the Belvedere Neighborhood Group, they're applied for funds from the, for the public art funds for the beautification of traffic boxes and trash cans in certain sections of the neighborhood, and I guess a couple of the boxes might be restricted as far as historical, historical neighborhood, or doesn't quite make the line or whatever, so, if we could have people from the Historical Board also work with them, to see what we can do, you know, it's just the traffic boxes, they'd like to beautify them, and some trash cans around the sections of Belvedere. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Leahy, Council Samaras, no? Okay. All those in favor of that, all those in favor of that motion signify by sayin' aye?
Sure. Could I ask?
And the opposed, motion carries.
Sure, thank you. There's someone here to speak, could I, what do I want to say?
On the motion?
Yeah, on the motion.
Suspend the rules and allow...
Motion to suspend the rules to allow Ms. Pittkin to speak?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
But after the fact, all those in favor of that motion signify by sayin' aye, and the opposed, that motion carries, Ms. Pittkin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a member of the Belvedere Neighborhood Association, and with these public art grants, we were trying to come up with things that we could use the money for, and one of the things that we discussed was beautifying the beautiful gray electrical boxes that are so gorgeous. I've been in other cities that have them painted, there's one actually that's painted downtown that looks really cool, and we thought that that would be a good thing to spend money on, it's just eye-catching and vibrant. The trash cans that we're talking about primarily are the ones that are in front of the MRT and the auditorium, and we would like to see what we could do to beautify them, so that they're eye-catching, and when you went to throw something away, you actually make it into the trash can. And I really appreciate the fact that Council Samaras and Council Leahy were at the Belvedere meeting and brought this motion forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pittkin. Anything else, Council? Seeing none, motion has already been voted on. Anything further? You had that look, Council Mercia?
Are you gonna say anything else before we adjourn?
The only thing I wanted to mention, I was gonna mention the City Lights Parade?
There you go.
Yes?
That's it.
And also, Saturday is also Small Business Saturday, it's actually a national campaign, but we also want to call attention to this in the city of Lowell, because it'll coincide with the City Light festivities, which start at 12:00, concluding with a parade in the evening, so please come on down to, come down to the city during the day.
And free parking, Mr. Mayor.
And free parking, thank you, Council. Belanger? Council Mercia?
Yes, that's what we were gonna say, there's free parking on Friday, November 27th, Saturday, November 28th, and Sunday, November 29th, at the following garages, the Leo Roy Garage, the Joseph Downs Garage, and the Edward Early Garage, so, that is something that we'll be offering to the public, and so, there's no reason to not come downtown and spend your money with our local businesses, but also, we have on Thursday, December 3rd, because I don't think we're meeting December 1st, but we have... 1st, but we have from 3:00 to 6:00 City Hall Holiday. It's open house to the public and all the departments, they'll get a chance to meet and greet all the departments and for some festive conversation and a good time. So that's what I just wanted to say. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Yeah, so the parade begins 4:30. So come on down and it will conclude with a light, the lighting ceremony at 6:00 PM. We'll flip the switch. So I'll see everybody Saturday. And if nothing else, happy Thanksgiving to you, Mr. Manager, and your administration, members of the city council, and certainly to all our viewers and all of our citizens of City Lowell. Happy Thanksgiving. Entertained a motion to adjourn by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Martin. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye and the opposed, that motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.